Good evening, welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, May 7th, and D, please call roll.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorenson. Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Al Sorenson notified us that he could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse him?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, under announcements tonight, the first one is that May is National Bike Month, and tomorrow morning, 7:30, is National Bike to School Day. And there's gonna be a big ceremony at Lincoln Middle Schools. Kids bike their way up there about starting around 7:30, quarter to 8:00. I'll be there along with Cameron Gero, the principal, and we'll be all welcoming the students as they bike safely to school. Through May 24th, you can donate to the WSU Pullman STEM Coalition Science Rules STEM Supply Drive. It's not necessarily a broadcasting phrase, I can tell you that. Donations will support the K-12 students, libraries, and after-school programs. For a list of items to donate and drop off sites, just go to askdoctoruniverse.wsu.edu/sciencerules. 2019 Spring Fair Plant Sale, an open up for the Pullman Community Gardens at Cobble Farms. That'll be this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the corner of Derby Street and Professional Mall Boulevard. A number of other community groups will be there. We'll have raffle for gardening supplies and gift certificates, and also have some garden plots available. Not too early to clear your calendar for the Pullman Art Fest on Friday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, May 18th, from 10:30 to 8:00 p.m. On Tuesdays through July, discover new worlds through virtual reality at Neo Public Library. Youth ages 13 to 17 and adults 18-plus are invited to experience VR during library's Tech Tuesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Another proclamation tonight, one of them, we'll do another one just a little bit later, is that Beyond the Call is more than a slogan, it reflects the vital public service provided by emergency medical service workers, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, now therefore I declare that Emergency Medical Services Week is May 19th through the 25th. And we encourage all residents to encourage and recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service provided. With that, the next item on the agenda is confirmation of appointments, and I would ask for your approval of the designation of Transit Manager Wayne Thompson as primary representative, and Finance Administrative Services Director Mike Urban as the alternative of representative for the Washington State Transit Insurance Pool Board of Directors. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, our next item of presentation tonight is the Public Works Annual Report. And the Public Works Annual Report, I also had a proclamation for that because coming up next week, 19th to the 25th, is Public Works Week, National Public Works Week. And says, whereas the "It Starts Here" theme showcases community dependence upon public works and professionals who are always here and always ready, and whereas infrastructure with public works, growth and innovation starts with public works, mobility starts with public work, security starts with public works, healthy communities start with public works, and whereas these could not be provided without dedicated professionals in public works who ensure the efficient operation of public work systems and divisions, including Pullman Transit, engineering, protective inspections, government buildings, maintenance, street maintenance, water and sewage systems, wastewater treatment, stormwater management, and city fleets. It's a reason why they have the biggest budget, and we have several members for Public Works Department in the back, and we thank you very much for all your service. The National Public Works Week is May 19th through the 25th. And with that, that's a long introduction, Kevin.
It is.
So now it's time for the Public Works Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The 2018 Public Works Annual Report is in your packet, so I'll just, as I usually do, run through a few highlights and then answer questions. Major engineering projects included arterial streets resurfacing 2018, which was Hawaii Road last year, wastewater treatment plant, UV disinfection, and miscellaneous improvements, which is ongoing, Water Tank 11 and Booster Pump Station 11, ongoing as well, Bishop Boulevard Bridges Deck Resurfacing, and the Welcome Wayside Project. Other work included a traffic signal safety grant application, implementation work related to electronic permitting software, and beginning design work on a number of bond projects approved by Pullman voters. Building permit valuation was $104 million, which was down a little bit from 2017. Major projects included WSU Plant Sciences Building, WSU Global Animal Health, Camiak Elementary School Airport Runway realignment, The Hills on Grand, completion of SELZ Beta and industrial buildings, completion of Birch Hills Apartments Phase II, Coog Housing on Oak Street, Pullman Regional Hospital addition, and Evolve on Main. Stormwater continued, successful programs of adopt-a-stream, annual stream cleanup, classroom education in local schools, and transit fixed route ridership was $1.36 million, which was a slight increase from 2017. Dial-a-Ride was up significantly from $20,419 in 2017 to $23,869 in 2018. The city pumped 928 million gallons of groundwater from the Grand Lawn Aquifer last year, which was a slight decrease from 2017, when 930 million gallons was pumped. Unaccounted for water was approximately 4%, which we consider excellent. We had eight water main breaks in 2018. All of them were cast iron. In 2017, there were six breaks, and in 2017, six breaks, 2016, eight breaks, so kind of about where we normally fall. Councilmember McCall had asked me the age of the lines that broke, so one of our aides went and looked those up, and I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but all of them were from the late 1960s, early 1970s. That vintage, so. As part of the Police Basin Aquifer Committee, we continued work on a water supply alternatives project evaluation, and authorized funding for development of a new groundwater model that will be done at WSU. The treatment plant processed approximately $1.04 billion gallons of wastewater last year, which was a slight increase from the previous year. Daily flow averaged 2.85 million gallons. We had DCBM violations, which we've had in the past, and those will be addressed with the UV project completion in September of this year. 445 dry tons of bio-solids were applied to farm ground last fall as part of the city's annual land application program. MNO crews maintained approximately 72 miles of streets, 21 traffic signals, 112 miles of water main, and 97 miles of sanitary sewer line. And as we've done in the last few years, we posted the annual report on the city's website under Public Works, so we've got the last three years there if anybody's interested. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Kevin, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, for getting that data together for me. I know you guys have been hustling to get all kinds of data together so we get an idea of where we're at, and that's kind of how it felt, that timeframe felt about right to me, the late 60s, early 70s. And I wanted to also be sure and point out that the 4% water that's unaccounted for is an extraordinary, I mean, that's a really positive number. Many cities don't even come close to that. They're 86, 87% of water that they can account for, and the rest of it is leaks, or lost, or metering problems, and this is absolutely sterling results, and we really do care about every drop of water in this community, even when it comes crashing down out of the hills.
Well, the credit goes to our MNO folks for that.
They did a fantastic job of sorting out what was a very unusual and a sudden situation, and I appreciate their report from last week. It was really an amazing job all year round. Things just tick along.
I know that we're replacing all these water lines that keep working on that. Do we have an idea yet how many are left percentage-wise of the old pipes?
No, that's one of our big goals here in the next year, so we're gonna do our next water system plan update. We'll probably do the requests for proposals later this year, and one of the key things we want to get out of that is dating all of our water lines, which is something that we don't have. And so, once we have that information, I think it'll be pretty easy to prioritize and figure out a CIP schedule for replacement of those lines.
Once we get the GIS system working too, everything will be dated that way too.
Correct. It'll just be added right into that system.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick question, the street resurfacing, so I saw the story about, I don't know, we're doing something different to prioritize some street resurfacing, so kudos, I guess, on thinking about that. I know that has come up, and we've mentioned.
Right, they're all being graded right now.
Right. Yeah. Private companies. Will they grade entire streets, or will they grade even sections of the street?
It's at certain intervals. I think it's 30 feet, so it's pretty much every city street, other than the state highway, which DOT maintains, and WSU maintains streets, so every other street in Pullman, other than private streets, have been field surveyed already. So all that work has taken place, it took them about a week, there was a little bit of social media on that, but they've been in and out, and we have a meeting on Thursday with the project manager to start talking about how to process the data in the software we're using to run different scenarios, to look at, well, if we just maintain our current budget, this is kind of what we can expect if we want to, and just to back up a second, all the streets are rated on a scale of 0 to 100, and so if we want to improve that grading system, you know, to go from, say, a 65 to a 75, we'll figure out what it might cost, and, you know, have a discussion about that as well. So, want to come back and present those to Council at a later date, so we can have a good policy discussion about that.
Thank you.
Just to Councilmember Chapman's question also, this was something that came up many years ago, where we've been doing rotating schedules around the hills, and I know, especially for myself, this was a goal that had been ongoing for many years on a needs-based assessment, and it is more costly, however, I think it'll yield some real positive results, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate you taking that on.
It just seems more difficult.
It'd be nice to have a prior tri system.
Yeah.
Worst ones get addressed first.
Thank you.
Worst is first.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Kevin. With that, next comes another presentation, this time on the Snow and Ice Control Report, and we have Art Giro, supervisor of MNO, maintenance and operations.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to present. I think the last time I presented on this subject was in October of 2017, and I remember Councilmember McCall saying how much energy I brought to that presentation, and I really appreciate that, and I'm happy to say that I think I'm gonna bring some energy tonight, because there's a lot of good things happening in snow and ice control. At least, that's the way I feel, and I hope you feel that way too. I'd also like to add, before I start, I have a couple of my team members here this evening, Justin Kohe and Randy Boobenthaler. This last winter, they were our night crew, as we call it, so if you look at the scheduling, they spent all winter working nights and that, and so they would work 3 to 11:30 shift every day, and so they're two of our, you know, we have a great crew, these are two of the top guys.
And because of that, we were able to deal with our issues that we hadn't before, in terms of how it usually hit during our time whenever it was trying to get to work.
Yeah.
And that's fantastic.
So that was a focus of the plan that we revised in 2017, was to deal with that morning commute, and so I'll get into that a little bit here as we move along, but let me see if I can get this thing started here. All right, got to page one. So, I just wanted to maybe recap some of the highlights of what we talked about, and that we identified that we changed when we did the last snow and ice control guidelines in 2017. The first thing that we did, or one of the things we did, was that we increased the snow removal areas, and as you all might recall, prior to that, the only place that we actually removed snow was downtown. And we had issues, especially around Sunnyside School, as I remember, kind of during when school was let out, having kind of a lot of congestion there and safety concerns. So, we added snow removal areas around basically Sunnyside, Franklin, and Jefferson Schools. And so, we did that, we have snow route maps, but we didn't show the private streets on those route maps. And so, if we were to put them online, or something like that, or the guys were to look at them, there was always a question of what's a private street and what's not. So we got that added there too, and they're updated on the website, so if you're interested in seeing that, that's available. But I think the most notable thing we did, we changed our kind of philosophy on the use of road salt, and basically, we changed the ratio of road salt to sanding aggregate. Prior to this, we was using a 1 to 50, 50 to 1, 50 aggregate, 1 to 1 road salt. Now we use 4 aggregate, 1 road salt. So, I mean, it's quite a bit more aggressive, and we also began to apply road salt to the residential areas. And we talked a little bit last time about the concept that if you can get the road salt down, and you can keep the snow from adhering to the asphalt, then when the plows go by, it peels away more easily and gets it off to the side of the road. So, we've been providing a lot more public information, kind of, you know, we have a couple of great people that work for the city who are constantly keeping our Facebook page up, and all that, and talking to our crews, and that, so that's been really a positive thing. We constructed, prior to coming to you in 2017, we had already constructed a kind of a storage area for the salt, because we're gonna use a lot more, we needed an area to store it. So that was done. And then we also changed the scheduling of the crew, and this was done mainly to get to address that morning rush. So, what we did was we had two people come in at 2, previous to this, two people came in at 3:00 a.m., and then the rest, most of the rest of the crew came in at 7:30 a.m., and then two people came in at 3:00. So we changed that, so that two people came in, now come in at 2:00 a.m., and another two people come in at 5:00 a.m., and then most of the crew comes in at 7:30, and then we still have the two-person night crew. And we also had contracted with a weather forecasting service, and the real value of that to us is, most of the, well, almost all of the websites that you use, NOAA or whatever, don't really give you any idea of what the pavement temperature is, and we make decisions based on pavement temperature, not ambient temperature. And so this was the, even though we don't actually measure it, they have some kind of mathematical things they can do with other data to kind of project what that pavement data is that they provide us, and that's been really, really helpful, especially when we're trying to deal with black ice and that kind of stuff, trying to predict when it might be, so that we can predict when the crew comes in. So, we, the city addressed on-street parking, most noticeably up on College Hill, and that's been a really positive thing too, and I'll get into that a little bit more a little later, but. And we've also, this last year, this was one thing I updated, and I got a lot of positive feedback, so I absolutely plan to continue it, because it's all, I think it's as helpful to Kevin, and Adam, and the council members, as it is to me, to sit down and kind of go over what we're doing for the day, what we've done, where we've been, where we're going. So that, we'll continue that.
Especially when we get questioned about it, that was very helpful information to have.
I print that thing out and pack it in my pocket.
I have it on my phone, so it worked well.
So I wanted to talk a bit, a little bit, you know, we had a pretty interesting winter weather-wise, and so, you know, especially in February, but this, these two maps here kind of show regionally, and the one on the left, oh, wait a minute, wrong button, okay, hang on, I gotta figure this out, okay. The one on the left over here is the temperature percentile for the date range, January 1st, 2019 through April 28th, so April 28th, 2019. And basically, during that period, it was in the, the temperature was above normal, it was in the top 33 percentile of the data set, and so, you know, basically, it's, let's see, hang on, oh, that's precipitation, I'm sorry, it was in the top 33 percentile. So, it's a lot wetter year than we're normally would have. On the other map, on the other side, kind of shows the temperature, and the temperature was the record lowest for that period in the data set. So this data goes back to 1979, if I didn't already say that, and so that, this year was the record lowest since 1979. So on the scatter plot here, this is kind of interesting, so on the X-axis, you have, this is just for February, on the X-axis, you have the inches of precipitation during the month of February, on the Y-axis, you have the temperature. And so as you get down into this, this lower quadrant, right in here, you can see that it maybe wasn't the wettest year, but it was close to one of the wettest years since 1979, and was really close to being the coldest, so wet and cold, more snow. And so, that's just kind of interesting, that really brings it right out to you where we were. So, then we looked at the NOAA data, and the NOAA data we looked at was from 1979, so it's the last 40 years. And so, in terms of temperature, that average was colder by 10.6 degrees for the average. So, this, I think it's called a whisker graph, but at the bottom there, the red dot kind of indicates where that kind of falls in that data set, so it was all the way to the bottom, the average temperature, or the lowest temperature, the highest temperature in the month was 30.58 degrees. On the bottom, we have the precipitation, and so, kind of the same thing, if you look at the data set, the average was, or the highest, the average for the month was 3, or the most was 3.91, and it was wetter than average by 1.95 inches. So, again, the theme is wetter, colder, more snow. Okay? So I would talk about expenditures, and you may have already sent, seen, saw this earlier this year, because I did get a copy of this to Adam, so I don't know if he's already presented on this, but in the left column here, we have, you know, our 2018 expenditures were for the entire 12 months, and in 2019, I'm showing the first three months. And, you know, we're right at $304,000, $305,000 for expenses this month. Our snow and ice control budget is about $350,000, so there is some concern about that, but I will, you know, I just want to add that we're really stocked up on salt, we have a good storage of salt right now, and we have a lot of aggregate, so the two things that we would spend money on, we're kind of, I feel like we can make it to the end of the year, so that is maybe not as bad as it might look. So, one of the things we did this year, and the process we went through in 2017 included a process review of the process, and during that, we included all of our, you know, frontline guys, and we all got together in a room, and we tried to figure out how we could make things better. And so, part of that is to continue that kind of concept with the debriefing after the winter, and so, we conducted that, and basically, there were some takeaways I had from that, from the guys, and the first one is, their top priority is an additional 10-wheeled dump truck, and that 10-wheeled dump truck, right now we have one, and we, you know, we usually use it on all the main, kind of priority one streets that are around town, and to have one on the north end and the south end of town would really help us be more efficient, getting out there and getting those main routes done, so we can get back further into the residential areas a little quicker. So that's their top priority. They have suggested some changes to the morning schedule, and just to maybe kind of outline what that is, I mentioned earlier what we do now, what they're proposing is, what they'd like to do is have four people come in at 3:00 a.m. instead of 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., and I think that's a really positive move for us, because if you look at that, it gives us basically 16 man-hours before 7:00 o'clock, as opposed to 14 man-hours the other way. And so, you know, the crews worked really well, the night crew realizes that that, they might have to work over a little bit more, but it was a great thing that they came up with, and really positive thing that I plan to support, so. They would also, we have one plow truck that we keep as a backup, and the idea came up that we may, maybe a good thing to do with that truck would be to go ahead and outfit it for, so that it could put liquid de-icer. Currently, we do apply liquid de-icer with the one-ton trucks, we don't have any bigger trucks, so this would allow us to apply more quicker, I guess, and that's really important. We use that mostly in what, black ice and pre-treating, or de-icer, pre-treating the roads, so that seems, we already have the tank, we already have the pump to do that, really all we need is the control, and so we have like all the pieces, but we just need to do it. So that's a really good idea they came up with. We all feel very strongly that the increase in road salt usage has paid dividends, and I think, you know, how do you measure that? And how, the way I measure that is how many phone calls I get during the day, how many emails I might get from you guys, and, or maybe Kevin called me out, you know, and I have to tell you, and I think Kevin and I met with the guys this afternoon, and I agree, Kevin pointed out that this year was probably the best that we can remember, as far as, you know, people saying positive things, and, you know, really, we got accolades, and I feel really good about that, and really, all of the, you know, all that goes to the guys out in the field. They did a tremendous job this year. So, we always, you know, we always get in this talk, you know, we have basically 12 maintenance and operations guys that take care of the maintenance, and, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to look at adding more people, and I think we're getting very close to that. We're doing a strategic planning this year to look at MNO, and the structure of MNO, and trying to figure out the best way to move forward, and as part of that, we'll look at some of the staffing, so, but it is, you know, not only is it something that management thinks about, it's something that the employees think about too. And we all agree that the parking restrictions on College Hill and other areas of the city are working. And so, that, you know, this year, working with the police department, you know, we're really fortunate here in Pullman, working with the police department and working out the issues, because, you know, it's not always easy to, you know, you have parking restrictions up at WSU, and, you know, the coordination, that can be quite difficult, and so, I think we worked very well, and then I have, you know, really accolades for the police department for how well they worked with us on that, so. All right, so I got a video for you. So, one of the things that people don't often get is what, and some of you, I think, have taken a trip in a snowplow before, but one of the things that people don't get is what it's really like. And we, when we snowplow, and Justin brought this up today when we were talking about it, when you watch this video, I want you to keep in mind that not only do you have to wield that 12-foot plow in front of you, you also have to put the snow gates down and up and down at the same time. You got a lot of leverage you're dealing with, and I have nothing but respect for these guys, they do an excellent job of this, but I just thought I'd take, maybe just kind of show this, let me see if I can. All right, it's kind of. So, I don't know how well you can see that, but that is a plow. Guy driving a plow.
My car's on both sides.
I picked a good day to shoot this, because it was trash day too, so, you know, there's all the obstacles out there. So I think, you know, what I think about when I see this is, you know, not all the time do people understand when we put out stuff on Facebook that we need you to move your cars and all that, and we can do so much better job if people just put their cars in driveways, if you can do the neighborly thing, and maybe you have your driveway shoveled and that. The thing we don't do right now is schedule, or we're not able to put out a schedule when I mean, you know, it's something that we talk about a lot, and maybe sometime we'd be able to do that, but at this point.
It was great to put out a schedule about the sweepers going through neighborhoods and the gates there.
Yeah.
Of course, that hit my neighborhood the same time garbage was out.
Yeah, I wondered about that, too. I saw that.
But it worked out really well, and I really appreciate the schedule.
Yeah, and we're always trying to make things better, so if we can figure out a way to do that with snowplows, eventually we might, maybe, there's some stuff we're working on which might help with that. So, you know, looking forward, so we just, this year we have an angled plow in the budget to put on the, for the loader, and we have another one scheduled for 2021. And that, there helps us with removing snow from cul-de-sacs and that kind of stuff, so this year in the budget, we have the purchase of a small sanding aggregate salt spreader, which we're replacing the ones that we have in the one-tons now, and so, and then next year, we have another one budgeted, or at least proposed to be budgeted in the CIP this year. We, again, you know, one of the guy's highest priority, the guy's top priority is the purchase of the additional 10-wheeled dump truck, and that's been proposed in CIP for 2021. We also have, in the 2021 budget, we have a covered storage shed that we also have proposed. proposed. And then, you know, the setup of the single axle truck, that will also pop up, I think that'll fall under minor equipment. We'll probably propose that in the 2020 budget, so. And then we're going to just continue to provide timely information via social media and other outlets. And so we're, we'll just continue that and try to do a better job. You know, I liked it, I really liked the, unfortunately, that video wasn't from the city of Pullman, but that's the kind of thing that, things I think would be very good to have on social media, the perspective. And so we'll look at more opportunities to provide that kind of perspective to the citizens. And then one of the, we, one of the things we talked about last time was putting GPS on all the snow and ice control. So that, that's all been done, all the, all the snow and ice control could now have GPS on them. And we're looking now at the new website of having a portal that people can see the progress of the snowplows. And so we're talking about that. Usually, usually entities don't put that in real time. Usually offset that by a couple hours, but at least you can see, you know, through a window of time, you know, that. And so total transparency about what we're doing and when we're doing it. But it also provides us another thing, which may be just as important, and that is us being able for the crews when they transition from, from night shift to day shift, and that, to be able to see where we're done, where we haven't hit. The, so they'll have a portal in their, in their shop, which will be basically a computer, TV kind of a thing, and they'll be able to see that, they'll have the snowplow map maps. And so they'll know how much of the snow routes they haven't done, right? And so I think that'll be very positive and make our operations a lot more efficient. So, and then we're doing the strategic planning, we're looking at the staffing. And I think the one thing that, one thing that I, I think that we need more work on, we identified it in 2017, and we plan to expand our training program. So that's kind of where we're looking forward the next, next year or so. So I think, so do you guys have any questions?
Okay, we'll go Nathan, and then we'll go Brian.
This is a three, I have three. Okay. So several, several years ago, beet juice was being used on WSU, and concerns about, of course, using salt in the environment. Have you been in communications with WSU, how, if they're still utilizing that? Has it expanded? That's question number one.
Okay. So, yes, I have been in contact. Actually, that happened years and years ago. WSU was actually the first, they dropped it first.
Yeah.
And that for, kind of forced our hand, because you, it's, when you add the beet juice mag chloride, and you take a chance of tracking it on to regular, it can produce slick spots. So we, at that time, stopped using the beet juice.
Okay.
And they're still not using it, and we haven't considered it either since then.
Okay. Now, the plants along Stadium Way, they've been changed, and originally, I, the, the logic behind having the bushes was to protect the walkways from the, you know, the snow being shoveled on there. Have you heard any complaints, the walkways, now that the plants have changed along that way?
No, I have not, Councilman Oiler. In fact, I mentioned today in our meeting that one of the most notable things this year compared to the previous year, but I didn't hear many complaints, not near as many complaints about us plowing snow on the sidewalks. So I think that's another positive aspect of kind of what we've been doing. And I think it has to do a lot with the fact that we're using salt, we're getting it down to a liquid thing, and so there's not big piles of snow that end up getting pushed. So, specifically to your question, no, I have not.
And you got to give some credit to Parks and Rec, because Parks have been out there on the sidewalks with their smaller plows, too.
And the social media, I think, pushes it. Last question. People have asked about the logistics of removing larger snowberms. I know this, we do some of this, but this was something I heard many times. Can you explain a little bit, and why we don't do it all?
Well, there's, there's several, I mean, it's basically a manpower thing. I mean, if you think about, there's two things that go along with that, manpower and storage and the equipment to do it. And, you know, I kind of mentioned earlier that we have 13 guys.
Yeah.
So to get into, whenever we do snow removal, you know, maybe this year we did, but we usually hire at least the truck part of that out. We don't use our own trucks, because we don't have additional trucks to do it. So I think that would be, you know, kind of a hindrance of expanding that.
Okay, thank you.
But you did remove some of the snow downtown. I know you were very good about moving that. Worked with that mightily and mightily, as I recall, in trying to get some of those things out.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we do, we did, we did get a Bobcat with, that had a, has a snowboard, I guess that's one other piece of equipment that we bought, that we're now able to blow the snow, and so all we have to do is contract with the truck instead of both, but, and we've, we utilized that a lot this last winter.
And the smaller ATVs as well, now that we, that's legal.
Yeah.
And a lot of people, Braden?
Art, we spoke several times this last winter.
Yes, we did.
I really appreciate the job you guys did. You know, that first, that very first day that it snowed, we had some trucks that were, you know, under, under the weather, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Hydraulic issues and other things. And I remember getting several phone calls and emails, and I told folks what was going on. And then, you know, it takes a while before people start trusting again. By the end of the winter, everybody was complaining about the snow and not the snow removal.
Yeah.
And, and I gotta give you kudos, not, not just because you guys did an excellent job, but because you were willing to say, what's not working, and willing to try new things, and that is huge. So thank you so much for that. Is that your phone going off?
It is. I'm sorry about that. I guess before I turned it off.
I don't know, does it start snowing?
Since we're talking about ice and snow tonight, I don't think the general public understands as much as the talent you have with your MNO crew, because it's not just ice and snow removal. All the other things they do, in terms of water and sewer, and all the maintenance features, patching, just, you might just mention some of the things that your whole MNO crew is responsible for.
Well, thank you for that opportunity, because that's, that's, that's really true. We are unlike most any other city that you'll find. And, and I think in some ways, you know, we're going to have to look at that, and that's one of the things we're looking at, at strategic planning. But these guys, not only do they do snow, not only do we have 13 guys doing snow removal, they're the same 13 guys that are going to jet sewers, they're the same 13 guys that are going to put in water lines, they're the same 13 guys that are going to make sure your water meter gets read, same 13 guys that are going to make sure that if your water meter's not working, then it gets repaired. They are extremely talented individuals, dedicated to the city of Pullman. We're very fortunate to have them, and it's amazing what they can do. Going forward, you know, we're going to have to look at that a little bit. We're going to try to keep as much of that as we can, but it gets to be a point where you kind of need, maybe we need to think about maybe diversify, having them departmentalized a little bit. But, you know, if we can think of a way not to do that, I think we'll, we'll work in that direction. But, yeah, great group of guys.
And then they did fantastic work when we had the Missouri Flat Creek overflow. They were out there doing a great job.
Yeah, and dedicate. I mean, this group of guys isn't a group that you really have to be on. I mean, when, when it, when it starts to snow, or when, when they, they're needed, they're there. And they're a kind of self-regulating group, and, you know, I think the world of them, and I wouldn't change one of them with anybody else, so. And I feel very fortunate to have them on my crew.
And I shared those daily briefings with several people, and, and that one day that for some reason didn't open, you knew, I emailed you and said, I gotta get this.
Yeah.
I think when residents understand what, what, the whole breadth of everything you do, then I think there was, that understanding softened, I think, some of their, their hard feelings that they might have had, you know, initially, and then they start realizing, actually, these, these folks are doing an amazing job.
Yeah.
And it was, it was really actually pretty cool to watch folks change their tone, I think, and, and understand the good job that you, you folks were doing. I mean, it was, it was a really tough February, especially.
Yeah, it was.
And people realized it was just one of those things, and, and you guys roasted the occasion.
And that's one of the jobs as council and as mayor, that we need to communicate that with the talent and the work, and as we're all part of the same team. And just make sure that the public understands that, yes, they may have an issue right now, but believe me, they're addressing it, and here's what they're trying to do. And I think during one of those times, you were plowing, and I think you had a water main break or something like that. I mean, you're just, you're going, you're just going by priority and trying to handle it all, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Marley?
Yeah, I just, you know, I second everything that everyone has said here. It's been, just been, you know, a really terrific job, and the communications effort has just been really, really, really helpful, and let our citizens feel, feel great about the great job you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. You're not on the 3:00 AM shift anymore, right? It's down to seven?
Spring break.
We're back to normal sleep, Stan.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for that. Great work you did, and I really appreciate it. With that, we now move to consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature, and the councils have a chance to look them over head of time. Your motion to read by time alone, by?
Second.
Move to second, almost in favor, second by a saying aye. Any opposed with that?
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 95586 through 95666, totaling $276,656.12. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 95667 through 95670, totaling $16,732.70. Accounts payable checks numbered 95756 through 95757, totaling $15,817.82. And voiding the following accounts payable check dispersments. 94363 for $5,661.39, dated 1/4/19. 94514 for $1.17, dated 1/14/19. 94753 for $10,235.76, dated 2/7/19. 94150 for $8,103.10, dated 3/6/19. 95507 for $8,629.60, dated 4/4/19. A motion to approve dispersments represented by electronic transfers totaling $76,198.59. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 95671 through 95755, totaling $641,095.37. A motion to ratify change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant UV disinfection and miscellaneous improvement, improvements, contract number 17-06. And a motion to ratify change order number one to the Pullman Police Department, contract number 18-12, emergency generator replacement. And a motion to set the date for a public hearing on the changes to the city's critical areas ordinance for June 4th of 2019.
There any items the council would like out for discussion? See, none. The consent agenda consists of items one through nine. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
The second, all those in favors, probably saying aye. Any opposed? Then we now go to our regular agenda. We have an item that's very special tonight. Mike Urban is here as our head of finance and administration, and we have some guests from the Kiwanis Club. Ginger Flynn is the president, past presidents Kerry Swanson and Frances Benjamin are also in the audience here tonight, too. So you asked for Kiwanis representation. There's a few more of us around here, too.
Well, then I won't speak long, and I'll turn it over to the Kiwanis, so they can get the recognition they so much deserve. It's not very, many opportunities where I can come in front of the council and do a presentation like this. So I'm actually very excited about, not just the money, but what it's being used for, for the park. That means a lot to me and my family, and part of what brought us to Pullman. But before you tonight is an ordinance to accept the $25,000 donation from the Kiwanis Club of Pullman, and staff wholeheartedly recommends that you do that. And with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Ginger as the president, and allow her to introduce her group a little bit.
Sure. Thank you. Am I presenting it to, am I giving it to Lynn Johnson? I'm going to present a check to you for $25,000.
Let's all applaud this. Please note, it's made out of the city of Pullman, not to like your ass.
Yeah, not to like.
And Mike Urban's had it safe in his vault until you got here.
Well, that, that's great. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things. It's taken us over 10 years to raise that money, that $25,000 for Mary's Park. It's been a big project for us, and we've done it through pancake breakfast, through football parking, through basketball parking, and we're really proud to be able to accomplish the goal that we set. But we have a big challenge ahead of us, because we'd like to raise more money for Mary's Park. So the Kiwanis Club of Pullman is putting out a challenge to the community that if we can raise another $5,000 in the community, Kiwanis will match it. So then we, we would make a total donation of $35,000 to Mary's Park. And so far, we've already got $1,000 raised out in the community. And we will be doing some radio spots, some advertising on social media, as well as going to other service clubs to put out a challenge to help raise that additional $4,000 now, because we're going to match the other, you know, it'll be $10,000 total with our match. But we're really proud, and I've got two past presidents, Kerry Swanson and Frances Benjamin, and Scott Hodge is our football parking guru now. So we're just really proud of what we've accomplished, and thank you for taking our donation.
The other question I have, Ginger, do they make the checks out to the Kiwanis Club or to the city of Pullman? Designate Kiwanis, so you have them match.
Larry's been talking to, and I don't remember at the board meeting, do you remember who's, he's talking to, Kerry?
Marley.
So we, we were not sure. So the first donation we got was made out to the Kiwanis Club, and it was marked for Mary's Park. I know that Larry's working with somebody in the city, maybe, I don't remember who it is. Yeah. Who'd you say?
They can always go to Mike Urban, our finance guy.
Okay. Well, and I know, so what we're in the process of doing right now is we're getting a button added to the Kiwanis, so we've, we've created a new page on the website just for Mary's Park that has a button for donation. We're in the process of figuring out how we can get a button on Facebook for them to, to make donations. I think there was some question on, we needed some clarification on that 5,000 additional that we raised, that if it went to the city, was there some kind of taxation thing that would come into play? So I know Larry is talking with someone, but I don't remember who it is that he's talking with, so.
Because the city can't handle donations, and it can't be, you know, basically, as a, as listed for the IRS.
Well, what we want to do is if the donations come in to the city, we want to track it so that we can know
Right.
That we met our goal, so that we can match that $5,000. And I know that 1,000 has already come in that was donated to the club and marked for Mary's Park, so I guess I can get clarification on that.
Thank you, Ginger. Kiwanis, I, I think it's important to mention, I know Alan Davis and I had been looking at what, what to do with Mary's Park many, many, many years ago. This was, I don't know, eight years, maybe?
Probably it's been that long.
At least that. And one of the key things was not to re-release it back to WSU, because we had to do something with it, or WSU would get the property. And not that that's a bad thing, but being able to...
Because it was donated to the city.
It was donated to the city, but if we didn't do something with it, then it would go back to, it would go to WSU. That was what was in the original agreement. And so I know there was discussion about a food forest going in there.
And there still is.
Transitioned, and then it transitioned into ADA Park, and, you know, what they, what we have there is really impressive with the CCE that we work with and everything like that. So I know, you know, you guys are going to do amazing things with it, and that's very, very cool to see.
And I think with this money, Alan's already able to, to order.
We've already had equipment delivered, actually.
Yeah.
Because he knew the money was coming. So it's pretty exciting, and there's already some musical equipment set up out there already that people can enjoy.
Went down there and played on it, yes.
Yeah, and, and I do know that we, we can't put the equipment down yet, because the ground's too wet, but soon, hopefully.
Is the educational garden, is that still planned?
So Alan did a presentation to us, I think, two weeks ago at Kiwanis, and there's all kinds of education that's going to happen out there. It's really interesting, the, the fruit trees that they're going to plant, you're going to be able to harvest on one side if you're in a wheelchair, and stand on the other side to harvest. So there's a lot of plans for an all-inclusive, so that children with any kind of disability that have siblings that might not, they can enjoy the park together, so.
Really glad that stayed in there, because that was... Really glad that stayed in there, because that was something that, you know, Alan was really jazzed about. And it's, from what I understand, will be the first regional. He really wants to make it. And I assume Kiwanis does as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Very cool. Ginger, again, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, past presidents Frances and Kerry there. And Scott, thank you for your great work at Football Party.
Thank you.
All right. With that, do we hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Did you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 19-5, an ordinance accepting a restricted monetary contribution from the Kiwanis Club of Pullman to the city of Pullman to be used for Mary's Park.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mike, would you pick up the check right now, just to make sure? I want everybody to make sure it's back in the fridge.
That goes astray.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Item number two is a resolution accepting the bid of Motley and Motley for accelerated street resurfacing for 2019, authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project. With that, Kevin Gartis.
Thank you, Mayor. Accelerated Streets 2019 provides for resurfacing of the following streets. Northwest State Street from Northwest Davis Way to the south side of the intersection with Northwest Whitman Street. Northwest Cleveland Street from Northwest Fisk to Northwest State Street. Southwest Skyline Drive from West Main to Southwest Fountain Street. The work involves grind and mix of existing asphalt and then resurfacing with new asphalt. Other work includes ADA ramp improvements and spot utility repairs. Bids were open on April 23rd with two bids received. Motley and Motley, Inc. is the low bidder at $574,577. The engineer's estimate is $556,276. Work on Skyline is scheduled for completion by August 23rd. State Street is to be completed by August 9th, and Cleveland Street by October 11th. Funding for the project is from the street fund, sewer maintenance budget of the utility fund, and the stormwater fund. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this? Then, do I hear a motion on this resolution? Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved second. Order?
Resolution number R-28-19, a resolution accepting the bid of Motley, Motley, Inc. for accelerated streets resurfacing 2019 and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we move to item number three, a resolution declaring certain property of the city of Pullman to be excess and surplus, authorizing the sale thereof. And with that, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, before you, it's a resolution declaring certain property surplus and excess. So, given the maintenance and operations supervisor the opportunity to get it off of our insurance rolls, out of the yard, before any additional repairs are needed to it. It's used, it's, it's useful life has been served with the city of Pullman, so we're asking you to move that along. There's four items on the list this time. This is coming to you a little bit different in the past from what I understand. Late, late last summer, they changed the procedure on how we're going to surplus items. So, in my conversations with Art and Ryan Lancaster when I got here, is we're going to be bringing these to you on more of a quarterly basis, instead of having these things sit in the yard for a year. And, because there's some financial advantages of getting them out of there as well. So, you'll be seeing a few more of these unless something pops up in between where it's like, we, we need to move this bus now because we have a willing buyer. So, that's still another opportunity for that. And with that, we recommend that you authorize the resol, or the, yeah, resolution as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm so happy you're doing it on a faster basis, so they just don't sit out there in the yard.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-29-19.
Second.
Move second. Order?
Resolution number R-29-19, a resolution declaring certain property of the city of Pullman to be excess and surplus property and authorizing the sale thereof.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a motion to approve agreement with Ring Central for telephone services. Once again, Mike Urban, you're really, we're really seeing finance and administration tonight, because you have, you're hands in a lot of things.
There's, there's a lot.
And we're very happy to have you on board. I just want you to know that.
Thank you. There's a lot of me to go around, so I'll, I'll try to keep it short. It's not just the Mike Urban Show all the time. There's a lot of other great departments doing some things going on here. So, before you again is Ring Central. I was back, I was here on the 23rd with Wayne Branick and presented you the concept of what was, with the, upgrading the telephone system, going from a purchase to a lease, and how that could save some money in the time since I was here last. We reviewed the contract, city attorneys reviewed the contract. It's the same contract you were presenting before. We, we aren't recommending any changes to that. We also had some additional discussion on some possible hardware savings into the lease. And we also discussed the build-out schedule. Ring Central thinks it's very aggressive, but we told them to do it anyway, and they kind of nodded their head, and we'll see how that goes. But the last thing is that after my presentation at the previous meeting, a couple of you came forward, and we had a discussion about council phone numbers. And with Ring Central and having the app on your phone, we can issue city phone numbers to you, so you do not have to hand out your personal cell phone numbers if you choose not to. So, that is something that is more than capable in the technology. And a couple of you did bring that to my attention. So, as the deployment commences, we'll be contacting you individually, whether you want to take advantage of that or not. And just because you don't at the first go-around, it doesn't mean we can't institute it later as well. But other than that, the bulk of the presentation remains the same, and we recommend that you take action and approve the contract as presented.
Any questions on this? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. A motion to approve agreement with Ring Central for telephone services. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, has any new business come before the consul tonight? Do you have any new business? Seeing none. Oh, yes. Please come to the podium. And didn't see the hand up right away.
I wasn't sure what you were asking.
Okay.
I had to improvise.
All right. And we limit our conference to three minutes.
I don't think it'll take me that long.
All right.
I'm Josie Nash. I live at 523 Southeast South Street. I want to thank you all for the 25 mile per hour speed limit signs. It makes me feel a whole lot better. But we still have a problem because people are coming through there. It's a shortcut, and they're going really fast. So, what I'm asking for is the crosswalks to be updated and painted because there's no visible crosswalks. And like the Cougar footprints downtown, if we could have children that play signs either on the speed limit signs or on the pavement, so that people can know that the kids are right there. I mean, kids are playing soccer and everything, right there. So, that's my first idea. My second idea is that there's a hole, it's a drainage hole, but it's on the west side of the bridge, the Cougar Bridge. And it's about two and a half, three inches deep, probably three inches deep. And my husband and I hit it on the bike probably four years ago, and it broke the rim, the rear rim, and broke the, broke the tire. And I was wondering if there was any way we could get a top piece put on it so that people wouldn't go down in it and break something else. And that's it.
So, after our council meeting, would you make sure that you can give Kevin the exact location of that, of that hole?
I will.
And make sure they take a look at it?
Yes.
Very good.
Are you good?
It's now been entered the record. Thank you so much, Josie.
Have a nice afternoon.
Is there any other new business to come before the consul? Seeing none. You can take a look at ten agendas. We do have another meeting on May 14th. The meeting on the 21st has been canceled. May 28th looks like it's going to be canceled. That's the Memorial Weekend.
Of course.
And then, we'll have June 4th again. So, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Will be seconded. All those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?